The City of Lakewood City Council Special Meeting on Monday, December 19th, 2022 at 6:01 PM. To join the City Council meeting this evening, your dial-in number is going to be 720-707-2699. And your ID number, as well as your Zoom number, is going to be 836-2082-8098. Again, 836-2082-8098. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
If anybody's listening, I can't hear a thing. I have no audio.
Okay, we can hear you.
I can try to give him a call after roll call.
Thank you.
Counselors Franks.
Here.
Janson. Believe I saw Counselor Janson.
Here.
Maia Guerrero.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Charazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
And Vincent.
Okay, so.
Okay, you have a quorum, Mayor Paul.
All right, and everybody can hear except for Mr. Abel. Somebody want to give him a call? We'll take a quick 30 seconds here.
Yeah, let me give, let me give him a ring.
Mr. Goldstein, can you give Ms. Vincent a call? She said she keeps getting kicked out.
I just heard from a constituent that the YouTube live feed is not working either.
Yeah, we did have some problems last week with that as well.
I can hear you now, I think.
Yeah, so Counselor Abel, you have a double feed going? Can you hear us? Okay, we're good there.
So if Counselor Abel can hear us, I guess we're ready to proceed?
Yeah.
He's giving us a thumbs up.
Two quick things. Mr. Rob, Mr. Goldstein's trying to help Ms. Vincent, and then there was a report that the live feed was not working. Can you check with Channel 8 or IT?
Yep, let me give Channel 8 a call.
An apologies for being off-camera for a moment. I'm just dealing with my dog, but I'm here and present and listening.
Thank you. So I just went to YouTube. The live is working?
Yep, that's right, Mayor. Channel 8 just confirmed that the live channel is working and Channel 8 is working.
Okay, and we're going to try to get Mayor Pro Tem Vincent in when we can. So we do have the roll. We'll note when she comes in the meeting. I will read our conflict of interest statement. All members of the City Council have the responsibility. So I just went to YouTube. The live is. So we got.
Yep.
Imagine everybody heard the redundancy? Should we try that again? Test, one, two, three?
Yeah, that was.
Everybody heard the redundancy?
Channel 8 isn't picking that up, or there's nothing they can do from their end.
Counselor Franks.
Mayor Paul, I am seeing that the YouTube is saying waiting for Lakewood. So I am not seeing the video working correctly.
Channel 8 isn't picking that up, or there's nothing they can do from their end.
Thanks. Just wanted to let you know that I just checked and it says waiting.
Counselor Franks.
Mayor Paul, I am seeing that the YouTube is saying waiting for Lakewood. So I am not seeing the video working correctly.
Channel 8 isn't picking that up, or that.
Okay.
There's nothing they can do from their end.
Thanks. Just wanted to let you know that I just checked.
We're having like an alternate universe skipping over.
Mayor Paul, the only idea from Channel 8 is that we log off the Zoom call and could jump back on. I don't know if that's, if you've run into similar problems in the past?
We've run into it while we're in chambers, and it's usually when another computer is turned on. It looks like, let me see if we have redundancy in our participate, participants.
Mayor Paul, the only idea from Channel 8 is that we log off the Zoom call and could jump back on. I don't know if that's, if you've run into similar problems in the past?
We've run into it while we're in chambers, and it's usually when another computer is turned on. It looks like, let me see if we have redundancy in our participate, participants. Okay, let's have everybody jump off and try to come back on and see if that'll work.
Is that we log off the Zoom call?
All right, we'll do a test and see if that's better. Thanks. Okay, so we'll do a test. Last week we had Comcast issues. And then internal issues, so let's see if this is better. Does not look like I have an echo, and everybody can hear me. Okay, we're just going to start the whole thing over again. So for those folks that are just tuning in, we apologize. As long as we've been doing these, seems like technology still can give us a hard time. So we're going to restart the City Lakewood City Council Special Meeting on December 19th, 2022 at 6:12 PM. For those joining via telephone, that number is 720-707-2699 with the Zoom code of 836-2082-8098. And that'll be a pound, double pound to get into the meeting. Again, that number is 836-2082-8098. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Abel. Here. Franks.
Here.
Janson.
Here.
Maia Guerrero.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Charazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
And Vincent.
Here.
All right, Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Beautiful. All right, thank you. So, statement of conflict. All members of City Council are responsible to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote, excluding the member at issue, to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Does anybody wish to rescuse themselves? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read item four into the record.
Item four, Resolution 2022-73, approving amendments to the 2014 Employment Agreement with the City Manager Kathleen Hodson and establishing the 2022 Employment Agreement.
Okay, so I would just like to remind council a little bit in the report of how we got here based upon Kathleen's evaluation, which took place in May. And so the personnel review occurred in May, which time council visited one-on-one with the city manager about the establishment of goals and voted to give her a performance bonus. The purpose of tonight's meeting is not to reevaluate the city manager, but rather to address those parts of her contract that have expired. I will note that evaluations and other types of personnel discussions are limited to executive sessions to avoid the personal liability issues that can arise from publicly making negative statements about an employee. So I ask that we stick to the agenda tonight, which is the proposed contract amendments, which Mayor Pro Tem Vincent and I had the opportunity to work with Ms. Hodson. This agreement needs to be agreed to not only by this party, this body, but as well as Ms. Hodson. And these are the key points before us this evening. I will note that we tried to have an executive session to discuss in-depth the negotiations, and we're not able to do that. So with that, I'll open the public comment on this resolution. I know that there was 20 comments online. I think one came in later on this evening. If you wish to comment, please go ahead and raise your hand at this point. Okay, I'll close public comment. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll ask for a motion to get this going.
Mayor Paul, I'm for the adoption of Resolution 2022-73.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of items I'd like to discuss. I do want to start out, though, with in the past, performance evaluations have figured into the manager's compensation. There seemed to be some misreading of the item tonight. Some folks seem to think that we're only talking about giving Ms. Hodson the same boost and compensation percentage-wise that we give the rest of staff. That's not the case. In the past, we have had a certain percentage extra from the general agreement that all employees get. We had, she met a third of the goals. Then she got 1%. She met 2%, 2/3. She got more. She met a mile. She got 3%. So what we're talking about now is giving her the regular, as it was this year, 3% raise that the rest of staff got, plus 3%. We're also removing all of the conditions that are laid out, laid out in the previous contract by which her performance is judged. So there will, the way I read it, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone from staff, but it seems that all of the conditions that she was rated on, operational items such as budget and finance, national and regional awards, capital program completion, employee workforce, police department accreditation, then community resources, or community regulations, external board and commission participation, community survey, 70% satisfaction or greater, council meeting, member meeting attendance, and then strategic planning. Those are all being removed, unless I'm mistaken. If I am, please tell me. So therefore, we're removing all the standards that give her additional compensation above the base raise that the rest of staff's getting. So we're automatically doubling the standard raise for her, it would seem. And we're removing all standards of scrutiny. Am I wrong?
So the commencing on April 1st, and annually, the city manager's base salary shall automatically be adjusted to reflect the average increase for all employees. In addition, the employees shall be eligible for a further 3% increase based upon overall performance rating of meets or exceeds expectations during the annual review outlined in Section 6.
Right, and the.
It's not an automatic. It's based on the average plus how she does in the performance.
I'm looking at page. On items, item five of the annual review. And it's talking about operational, require examples of objectives and other objectives. Those are not in the new contract. Also, I don't see a termination date in the new contract. In the old one, it was December 8, eight years later, and I don't see anything in this one.
Okay, just to clarify. Yep, just to clarify, her contract did not terminate on December 10th. Portions of it did. And that was the annuity agreement. So her contract is still in place, and this would still be in place until either retirement or termination by the council or.
Yes, or no, the standards, examples of objective organizational outcomes that are presented on, under item five? Those remain in the contract? Corey?
I believe so, and.
I'm not asking you. I'm asking Corey.
Right.
Thank you.
But yes, we'll get back to you. Ms. Janson, you have some. But, yes, we'll get back to you. Ms. Jansen, you have some questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. So I want to check my understanding of the finances. The city manager's base salary is $280,000 plus benefits on top, such as pension, insurance, et cetera. So the total compensation is very close to $360,000. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think, I think base compensation, and so the COLA came through during this process within the last month. That's why I think it went to two, that's why the extra eight came into play. And so normally, on average, I think at the city, the benefit package is about 30 to 33%. If I remember, is that accurate, Mayor Protem? So we figured, so yeah, on top of salaries in the city, it's usually about 30 to 33% more for benefits.
That's a loaded rate, yeah, for everyone.
So that $360,000 is about right? With the benefits?
Correct.
Okay. So the city manager was awarded a $10,000 bonus on August 8th by a 7 to 3 vote. Is that in addition to the $360,000, or is that included in that amount?
It's a good question. That would be going forward from here. So that was, that was taken care of in the last year. This would be from here on.
So the average city staff compensation increase is additionally applied to the city manager's base salary. Do we know what that base salary, what that base salary and the average increase would roughly be for the year 2023?
Well, it depends. Are you asking if she were to meet all the metrics? So it'd be up to 6%? Or it could be if the employees don't get anything, and she doesn't perform in any capacity, it'd be zero.
We don't know what, we don't know what the city, the staff compensation is yet. No.
No. No, that's done on April 1st, and that's why this, that's why we'd move hers further back so it coincides with the rest of the employees in April.
Okay, so in addition, there's an annual review in Section 6 of the proposed amendments. I'd like to confirm that the entire city council would be involved in the review process and not just Mayor and Protem.
Oh, they, they, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, they always are. We always have been. We do a review. That's the, that's the assessment that comes out and you send it back. Most people do send it back, and then it's compiled, and then we have the meeting going over it, and she's asked to respond if she wishes.
That will always be an open meeting?
No.
No.
Exactly. No, it's a personnel matter. We don't bring anybody's personnel matters to
Reviews are done, reviews are done in an executive session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we're gonna keep going. And Mr. Peterson, if you have an answer to that question, just let me know. Mr. Olver.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Counselor Jansen's last remark. So number 6, the annual review, I had the same problem with that. I do believe we need to put something in there that says we are going to use everybody in council, because right now, it doesn't say that. And just to say that that's what's always happened, that that's not sufficient, I don't believe. I think it should be in there that, that council itself is involved, and I don't have the technical word for it right now, or the wording to put in there, but that's, I'll think about that and come up with something as we bounce back around. But along that lines, I was gonna ask the mayor or anybody who wants to, to give us a background on how we arrived at this resolution. Now, everybody here knows, but there are people online, there'll be people looking later on down the road at this video, and they'll go, where did this come from? So could you give us a quick background? Basically, what I'm looking for is who, who negotiated this, who didn't negotiate this?
Why? So this process began with Ms. Hodson's review, I think on May 6. There's a timeline in Lakewood Speaks with all the communication. Upon her review, we discussed that there were components of this contract that were running out, and if council wanted to continue to move forward and address those, the consensus was yes, and that was given to Mayor Protem Vincent and I to begin that process. We began that process and then consulted outside council, and then continued to work with Ms. Hodson on key components of this, trying to bring it back to city council for discussion at an executive session, which we were denied the opportunity by a 7 to 4 vote to do that. And so that brings us forward tonight with where we've landed with this negotiation. And certainly, if you look at it as a whole, in some ways, Ms. Hodson as the most tenured executive in the state is actually taking a loss by losing some of the opportunities. But more importantly, her main goal is to continue to serve the community in which she's served for years in an honorable and professional fashion. And I think it's more than fair what she's presented. Counselor Mayak Guerrero?
I think you got off a topic on that one a little bit. Where I was going
Thank you so much. So I, I wanted, I wanted to clarify before I make a comment on that question, which is just, are we able to, like, publicly reflect how the evaluation went even in an aggregate?
I, I think that would be okay. Certainly, Ms. McKinney.
I'm definitely not gonna talk about anybody's specific discussion, just to be like, really clear.
Yeah, certainly. I think that was something that was brought out in the resolution for the, for the bonus that was received. So you're more than welcome to.
Great, because we had to, you know, eval, just to make sure that the public's really coming along on this journey with us. We all were presented an opportunity to give a written evaluation, and then we had an executive session where we were able to discuss her evaluation at length and with her. And in terms of just like, the scale at which almost everybody on council, the majority certainly reflected that she was highly competent and very good. And I just want to be clear that when I say the majority, I don't mean the simple majority. I mean, like, I think besides a couple of us that maybe weren't present, we all spoke really very highly actually of her with specific critiques, specific questions. But there was quite, I just want to be like, really clear that like, my understanding in that eval, what I took away, was that like, yes, while there's some specific things that we want to make sure that, you know, Ms. Hodson is bringing forward and, and working on continuing. Of course, feedback's really important, that overall, people were satisfied with her position. And I also really want to point out just the amount of really positive comments that we have on Lakewood Speaks, some from folks that I don't know well, and some from folks who are really community leaders who have been doing this work for a long time. And so I want to point that out today as well. And I want to reiterate for like, the third or fourth time, that this contract, we did have an opportunity to discuss more at length to like, really try to figure out the details rather than just having to do an up-down vote on it today. And we, we ended up not being able to take that opportunity. And I think that that's really unfortunate, because this is the, kind of like, the, the like, messy side of things where we haven't had an opportunity to like, drill in on some of these details in the way that we should have, and the way that the process typically works, but also like legally is supposed to work. And I then just want to close by saying, I think that this is incredibly reasonable, especially when you look at the idea that this is not something that guarantees that percent increase, that it's really going to be based on performance still, and that, you know, at a time when we've seen other cities have city managers leave at critical times, and that, you know, really, Ms. Hodson, whether or not we disagree with some aspects of what she does, or, or what have you, that like, in general, she's very responsible, she's very attentive, and she very clearly really cares for our community. And I think it's really important that we are able to have that consistency when we know that an elected body is not consistent. That's the whole point here, right, is a little bit of checks and balances. And so I would just like to offer that I am really very, really very pleased with her performance overall personally. And I have definitely also had disagreements with her and plan to have additional disagreements in the future. And I know that we will both be able to handle that professionally and well, and it won't prevent my ability to do my job or to be able to get the information that I need from the city staff, because she would just would never do that. And so I just wanted to be incredibly clear about where I'm at as this discussion continues. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I have Counselor Sharazai, Counselor Franks, and I'll circle back to Counselor Abel and Olver.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just want to reinforce the, some of the points that Counselor Mayak Guerrero made. I find this to be not only reasonable, but encouraging. The additional request for 20 days of executive time off, just to me, really reinforces a growth mindset and a desire to keep, you know, focusing on their skills and reinforcing the leadership that they have at the city. I, I want to make sure that the community is clear on the transparency of this process through the entirety of it. There are members of council that unfortunately weren't able to participate in the annual review for whatever reasons, but I want to make sure that it's clear to the community that there was consensus in those conversations. And so to make sure that people aren't feeling that there's a representation that this lived outside of any sort of process that didn't involve everyone's participation fairly. I know there's also been requests to review everything from like, her monthly expense report. And in reviewing her contract, that lives outside of what's required of her, but I think what we saw from that is, on average, she's spending $200 a month. And so to ask someone who's running the fifth largest city in the, in the state to sort of go line by line when that's not part of the contract, to me feels like we are sort of reinforcing a mistrust in someone that we've already signaled that we think you're doing a good job by providing a bonus earlier this year. And so I just wanted to reinforce that I'm in favor of where this conversation is heading. I think that this is a really fair contract, and I look forward to us getting to the vote.
Great, thank you. Counselor Franks and Springsteen?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I did want to just call attention, just for the public's benefit, that the annual review process is part of the city charter. And so I just want to read that. It just says, "Annual Review, the job performance of the city manager shall be evaluated annually by the city council. The city council shall review such evaluation with the city manager." So just making sure, I, you know, obviously, that means, and I've been on council now going into my eighth year, and at this point have had every opportunity to review every year. What I did want to stress, though, is that the process of the annual review, while I take that very seriously and participate and, and very, you know, want to provide good quality feedback, I have had many opportunities to meet with the city manager and have those discussions about what's working well in the community, what's not working well, ideas I had for improvements for the city. And I just want to stress to the public that that has been something that's always been available to me. We call them the walk and talk, because I like to get outside and do that. But it's a very robust ability to have good quality feedback, to share ideas. And so I do that throughout the year to make sure that I'm representing Ward 4 and sharing the concerns and desires of the community. And I do wish we would have been able to kind of dig into some of these topics a little bit more in, in our executive session that we weren't able to have. But I am comfortable. I feel it is a fair agreement, and I will be in support. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Counselor Springsteen?
I mean, first, I have, I have to say that, Mayor, for you to mute members of this council in the middle of their conversation, including Counselor Abel and Counselor Olver, is absolutely unacceptable.
Counselor, could you please, could you please stick to topic, please?
It's a violation of First Amendment rights, and so you better not mute me.
Could you please stick to the content of what we're discussing?
Beyond that, I want to address the idea that this review process was open and fair and open to everybody, because specifically, it was not open to me. And so it is not in any way a complete review. And to present it as such is a complete misrepresentation of many people on this council, and they know that, and they know why. Because I had requested accommodations on May 6th to be able to appear remotely. There is absolutely no reason that I could not have. We have other executive sessions regarding millions of dollars in, in deals in this city that are done remotely, and the IT department said that we could do it that way with total security. So there is zero reason that I could not, I should not have participated, other than when, when you make the process unfair and incomplete because you think there might be criticism, then it becomes something that is unfair and incomplete. So I wanted to make that clear. But the, the other thing I wanted to say is that Ms. Hodson told me herself that she has a rift with this mayor and has for many, many years. She has a rift with four of the counselors on this council. That is an extreme rift.
Counselor, I'm gonna ask you just to speak to the contract that's before us, please.
And that, that, so my question is, why are we just signing off on a contract when we have a city manager who has an extreme rift with 45% of this council? I think that this is irresponsible, the way that this has been handled. And I mean, we're rewarding divisiveness. We're, you're talking about, you know, people have been talking about people who have sung her praises, but there's plenty of people who are not, and who are very frustrated on both sides of the aisle. I have had the sustainability people reach out to me and say that things have not been followed through on. And then, you know, this idea that Ms. Hodson is open to share ideas with, that is remarkable to me, because that is only available to people who toe the line. That is the bottom line. This is irresponsible. This is way too much money. She has been in this position for too long, and we need to vote no on this tonight.
Okay, Counselor Abel, Mr. Peterson is not on. My understanding is on the last paragraph. All other provisions of the 2014 Employment Agreement shall remain in force. So those other provisions in there would still apply of her participation and other things along that line.
So item 5 will remain as it is in the 2014 agreement? Is that what you're saying?
I'm still trying to seek clarification, so
Okay, are you looking for clarification? Let me clarify another thing. You would have had your executive session, except that you wouldn't provide us advanced information of what we were gonna be talking about. You did for this meeting, and you should be lauded for that. But it should have been offered, if you wanted an executive session, it should have been offered to us at that time. So we would all be on level footing, and none of us would be at a loss for information. So you want an executive session, you lay the groundwork for it, and you'll get it. You want to hide things, you're not gonna get it. Thank you.
So let me just clarify, certainly for our audience.
No, you're not gonna clarify.
Mayor Protem and I were presenting all of this information to the body that evening, which was mentioned, and certainly
Evening. That's my point.
Okay.
You knew in advance what was in there. We didn't. We were not prepared. There was no way we could be prepared. But you saw fit to send us the information.
When you do negotiate.
For this meeting.
When, when you
I wish I could mute you, Mayor. I have the floor.
Okay, so I'm explaining to you
You tell the truth. You be honest.
Okay.
And everything will be cool. But you keep denying that you didn't provide us the information.
So unfortunately, you did not allow us to provide the information. That was unfortunate.
You had a chance for two weeks before the meeting. We We needed it in advance, not tonight. Oh, that's why we have.
I don't really think you should be muting Counselor Abel right now. He has.
I have to keep some sort of decorum going and we're not gonna have an argumentative conversation about the situation. Please go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, well, uh, before I was so rudely muted before, when I had the floor, uh, I was gonna talk about the process here of, of this, this whole thing. And, and my problem, which I pointed out earlier, uh, not today, but a couple of weeks ago, uh, is that the mayor, the mayor pro tem did this entire negotiation, came up with this resolution to change the contract, just the two of them. Now, nothing wrong with having two people, except for the number of two people. This is the city council's most important job is to oversee the city manager. And to just have two people put together another contract extension, to me, it's not the way to go about things. Um, we are here as a body, we're supposed to, we, for me, I would have gone with one, one counselor from every ward and the mayor. And everybody would have been involved and you wouldn't have so much troubles right now trying to, you know, coming up with this thing because we would have had input to begin with, uh, or somebody would have been there. I might have not been the person on that committee. But I'm saying that this whole thing was just not put together well to begin with. Um, as everybody knows, now the city manager is, is in charge of the city. If we look at the, the word chart, it's like citizens, city council, city manager. But the reality is the city manager, we don't really have control of the city manager except to do one thing. Hire and fire that person and make changes to the contract. But that isn't really, um, a real uh, ability to oversee someone, as, as you, as everybody well knows, it's, that's just the way things are working. It would be better if we had something else, but I don't know how we could ever come up with something. But anyway, my point being that all of us should have been involved. There were a lot more of us should have been involved in bringing this forward. Uh, I also noticed moving forward that, that the mayor, you've already let two counselors sing our city manager's praises. So I'm assuming that's okay for us to do the opposite right now. And I'm not gonna vote for this. Um, and it's nothing against her personally. Uh, I think she's probably doing a good job. Uh, I'm a nuts and bolts of running the city. I can't really tell because, you know, city counselors can't really talk to staff. Um, but you can get a gleam of what's going on and it doesn't really look so bad. The problem is that she's been there way too long. And what we have here now is an entrenched bureaucracy. And in that, the city has been doing its the same thing for so long. And if we want to move Lakewood forward, then I think we need to change it at the top. And it would start with, with the city manager. Um, and, and I hate to say that out loud. You can just imagine that she's not going to love giving me things going forward when I'm calling for somebody else to do the job. So I don't say that lightly. Um, and, but, uh, I, I do believe that's the, the problem. Um, it's well, with an, you all know what an entrenched bureaucracy is. They're doing the same thing. Uh, I would ask anybody watching or anybody right here right now is what do we have in Lakewood that draws in people from outside Lakewood?
Uh, okay. Counselor, let, let's stick to the contract, please.
Well, this is part of the contract. You let people sing her praises.
Yeah, but you've already, you've already made your statement that you don't agree and you certainly think that you need change. That's fine.
You did not, uh, mute the, the other counselors who were singing her praises. You just wanna mute the counselors who are not singing her praises.
That's not true, Counselor. Also, this is the problem with doing this in an open forum.
Well, that's why we like to have it in an open forum.
Evaluations and other types of personnel discussions are limited to executive sessions to avoid the personal liability issues that arise from publicly making negative statements about an employee. So not only are you violating that, this is also an open public conversation. Council did not get to actually go out and hire a new city manager. The city was, the council was not directed to hire a new city manager. The council was directed to go to the city manager and have a conversation about the key points that were expiring on December 10th. Council did that and tried to bring them back. The reason, Counselor Oliver, after this time, the reason why we do not have the opportunity to have a committee of five is because that would then be a public meeting where you would be negotiating a public meeting on a contract issue, which are reserved for, they're reserved for executive sessions. So I'd ask you to please conclude your comments so I can finish out the rest of the folks who have their hands up.
Have you still muted me? Am I muted? I can't tell right now. Looks like I'm not. That's surprising. I'm so happy you interrupted me that whole time I was trying to say something. It doesn't bode well for the mayor. Uh, I really wish we had a better mayor in the city. And that's not part of this thing.
I appreciate that and you will have a new mayor in a few months, so.
I know, I'm counting down already.
Great. All right, Counselor Jansen, you're up.
Thank you. Um, so tonight we're voting on amendments to the 2014 contract. And most, if not all of us, um, counselors here tonight, we're not on that council in 2014. Um, of course, to me, and why I'll be voting now on tonight's amendments is that the base compensation is higher than I can approve. I would have likely felt the same way in 2014 had I been on that council. Additionally, the proposed amendments award a three percent increase anywhere over fifty percent of council objectives. That increases in addition to whatever amount the city employee average increase is. I have a hard time approving a three percent increase for this objectives outcome. Thank you. Oh, and also, um, I did look at the city services compared by year and every year it's gone down. So, and someone did put that on Lakewood Speaks and I did have a chance to look at that. And it's on page twenty-two of the City of Lakewood Community Survey. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Springsteen.
I, I, I am so extremely offended with the disrespect that the mayor is treating people with tonight. Um, and the truth is, it doesn't do the city manager any favors to treat people this way because what it makes it look like is just what it is, is ramrodding through an employment contract and benefits with muscle and bullying and an iron fist rather than democracy and free speech. And, um, you know, I mean, to, to mute only certain members of this council, the same ones who the city manager has a rift with, makes it look like she's not playing by the rules and you're not playing by the rules. And that's really, really, uh, uh, bad optics for our city, for her contract, for the validity of her contract. Uh, muting people shows that you don't want them to speak because you're hiding something. You are trying to keep the public from hearing something. And that is, that, I, I mean, that's not fair to anybody here or anybody in our sys- city. Um, you brand anyone who asks questions, as does this city manager, as disruptive. We have a fiduciary duty as representatives of this city to make sure that we are doing the best by our citizens. And that is why we have a right to talk about it. It's not just our voice that you're muting, Mayor and City Manager Hodgson. It is hundreds or tons of thousands of people in this city that you are muting when you mute us. And you're just fine with it. It's crime. It's criminal. It is a crime.
So Mayor Pro Tem Vincent, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, 'cause I wanna make it clear for the public, that we were not hiring a new city manager. There was nothing that went out. There was no RFQ. There was no, there was no, um, now I've lost my train of thought with all of this. There was nothing out there where we were trying to hire a new city manager. Our goal or our, um, input was just to go out there, find out what other people were paid, what standard, talk with Ms. Hodgson. We haven't talked to an outside person to negotiate this contract to do the best representation that we could. So I just want the public to understand that this was not a hiring process, that this was just coming to the table to negotiate a contract with our current, um, city manager. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
So I did get clarification. Uh, I don't, five will be replaced with five in its entirety. And I would point out a couple of things. Counselor Oliver, I don't think participated in Ms. Hodgson's review. Counselor Springsteen has periodically not participated in Ms. Hodgson's review. Um, Counselor Springsteen has also filed notice of claims and lawsuits against Ms. Hodgson and myself and the city. So it's hard to be transparent, although, uh, Counselor Springsteen had the opportunity to have this whole discussion about everything that's being presented, as did Counselors Abel, Oliver and Jansen had that opportunity on December 6th to express their concerns, to give their ideas, to give Mayor Pro Tem Vincent and I any opportunity to go back to Ms. Hodgson with any sort of feedback. And we were denied that opportunity. So that, that's where we are at tonight. And, uh, with that, I would ask for a vote. There's been a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
I have my hand up.
Great. So that passes seven ayes and four nays, the nays being Oliver, Abel, Springsteen and Jansen. So with that, I'll conclude the special meeting at six fifty-five PM and we'll be back at seven PM for our LRA meeting.